Good evening, everyone. Tonight is the December 9th Board of Trustees Meeting. The time is 6:06 PM. I'd like to call this meeting to order, and as usual, we'd like to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, very good. So tonight, we have a very exciting meeting. We have a public hearing for our capital budget. We have a number of board presentations. We have a lot to discuss, a lot to announce, so we're all looking forward to tonight's meeting and eager to get going. So as usual, in this public meeting, we'll begin with public comment. So if there's anybody in the attendees who would like to do public comment, please raise your hand and we can let you in. However, if you'd like to comment on the public hearing tonight regarding the capital budget, you can wait until that public hearing rather than making a public comment in general to the Board of Trustees. So we'll see. No hands. Okay, excellent. So we'll begin, we'll move to the next portion, which is the Employee of the Month. And our Employee of the Month this month is Stephen Elliston. Stephen is a heavy equipment operator in the Highway Department, and he was recognized this particular month by Paul Murphy, who's his supervisor. And he had said that he did an outstanding job this month due to some oversight of the paving contractors. We all know that we paved Main Street as well as some other streets, and he helped tremendously in that regard. He also assisted the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation for this past summer and fall habs, harmful algae bloom season. We had the algae skimmers where we had received a grant from the New York State DEC. Those skimmers actually were from a company in Europe, so he did an outstanding job helping the DEC take those skimmers or take those microsonic devices actually that we no longer need. And we tried at Lake Agawam out, so they're going back to Albany. And in addition, he also reset the Cannon Monument at Monument Square after various events that we had. So we wanted to thank Stephen for his hard work and congratulate him on the Employee of the Month. And while we have this topic, I really just also wanted to thank all of our village employees. We are extremely fortunate to have an outstanding group of people who are here to serve us every day. And I know myself and our Board of Trustees are extremely lucky to be part of a great group of employees who serve our village every day. And me in particular have the pleasure of working with everyone in Village Hall. Wanted to welcome Karen Bontempo, who joined us as our deputy clerk. She's come in right away and has been outstanding with a positive attitude, and she's just elevated the entire first floor of Village Hall. And also wanted to recognize our building department. There is a highly large amount of activity going on in the building department. Tin Ho has stepped up as our Senior Building Inspector. And then I also wanted to thank and recognize Derek Highsmith, who has stepped up and has had an increased workload, as well as Jackie Allen, who was working on a number of projects, and Diane Greger, who's come back. And you've got Dean in the back as our Fire Marshal. And then on top of that, we've recently brought on two new building inspectors who are under the tutelage of Tin, Dave and Dave, and they're working extremely hard to get up to speed. So as we revamp our building department to make sure we're properly staffed, we've got a great team. So we're highly lucky to have all these outstanding employees. So with that being said, we'll move to our board presentation. We have our Deputy Mayor Gina Resta, who first will talk about Operation Village Beautification.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's always nice to hear someone from DPW being Employee of the Month as liaison to that department. I know how hard they work in totality, but it's always nice to acknowledge someone who's gone the extra step. So thank you, Stephen Ellison. As you may have noticed, there's lots of things going on in the downtown area. We've been working on the beautification of our village. Particularly, we had a very big project going on before and after Thanksgiving. We power washed all the sidewalks, the streets and the brickwork on Main Street and Job's Lane. And with that, we also power washed all the benches. And there's a significant difference. I couldn't believe the amount of feedback I got about that from people from all over. I got texts and emails and messages, and it was wonderful that people really took notice. And it's getting there. It's all part of the process. We're not finished with cleaning what we're working on now or the garbage receptacles. There's one right in front of Village Hall. If anybody wants to see one that's been refurbished, that was the first one. It passed the test today. So they were experimenting and had to just clean up and take care of what we have. And so you'll be seeing some of the receptacles that are going to be brought back to the yard, and they're going to be, the rust removed and repainted and the decals put on new. So you're going to see that in the interim. And also going back to the power washing, we have it. We are thinking very seriously, I think it might even be in the capital budget, I'm not even quite sure if that's capital, but we are going to be purchasing our own power washing machine. And everything that goes along with it will be put on a trailer. So if there's certain things during the year that needs to be cleaned, that will be taken care of. In the case of what we just did with the power washing, we did not have the equipment, so we did have to outsource that. It became in under $13,000, but it was well worth the money because it was, as I mentioned before, very well noticed. And we want to continue to keep up with the cleanliness of the village and beauty. So we are investigating right now and hopefully we could have this in-house in the springtime. So as I said, when certain things need to be spot cleaned, we can do that along the way with our own equipment and with our own staff. Also, around the village, there are a few trees that had been taken down and because of age and they were deteriorating, and those trees have also been replaced. So that's good to see as well. So right now, we are looking at pricing for redoing the bricks and also the edging around the trees on Main Street as well as Job's Lane. The edging needs to be done. What happens in the springtime and all that beautiful mulch is put down. It gets into the bricks and gets all over the street. And it just needs some edging, so we're looking to do that as well as new curving. So that's the next big project that we're working on. And currently, Gary and I are looking into different companies and getting different estimates and seeing which is the best avenue to go with that. So the beautification continues. I'd just like to remind everybody about the leaf program because we are getting pictures of piles of leaves and all that. The leaf program starts November 1st and it runs until January 1st. So a lot of people put out the leaves. It takes a while to get to all the leaves that are in the village because they do it by street. But once that street is done, they're on to the next street. But there's enough of a window that we do get to all of the street. So just remember, there's no clippings, there's no brush, no branches. It's only leaves that are picked up. So if there's other stuff that is mixed, those things that are mixed up with the leaves, it will not get picked up. So I just wanted to say, that's just as reminder, it's the same program that we've been using for many, many years. The other thing with the, I don't know if Gary could come in. Gary was going to talk about the downtown crew.
Yeah, he's coming right in.
Kat, if you could let Gary in, so he can just piggyback on me on this.
Already got him in. Hi, Gary, you're in?
Yes, hi.
Okay.
Maximize you guys.
There you are.
There we go. Okay, so I'm going to share a screen.
Very nice.
Okay, now Kat, you told me I was supposed to click in the right hand, but.
You got it. You're already there.
I'm already there. All right, bear with me. I'm a little bit of a newbie at this, but let's give it a go here. So I talked to our mayor and our trustee, and we came up with a little concept of a downtown crew. And essentially, what happens in our village before most of our residents have gotten out of their beds, our DPW department has warmed up their trucks and they're heading out to complete daily tasks. First off, the daily routines are the business district. And every day, our small army of workers heads to Main Street and washes down or blows the sidewalks and roadside of any leaves and debris. And then the street sweeper follows up to pick it all up before it blows away or enters our storm drains. And shortly after this, the garbage crew arrives and starts to empty all our garbage cans. Now, all this work has to be done in the first hour of the day so as not to interfere with the cars and residents that will soon fill the streets. After these chores are finished, our DPW forces spread out around the village to take care of the many responsibilities on our roads, in our parks, in our buildings. And then our downtown area will be left alone until the next morning when we do it all again. And years passed, that's all that was needed in the downtown. But as our community has grown, the downtown area activity has increased and so has the cleanup. The last US census has shown a 46.3% surge in population in Southampton Village. Combine that with the more recent influx of people due to COVID and new practices of expanded outdoor dining and garbage generated from face masks and wipes, and things really began to pile up. Skip that a little bit. The increase in people living and visiting our village has put a strain on what our village forces can handle. So no longer is an early morning cleaning of the downtown area enough. By noon, some garbage cans are filling up, papers are blowing around, streets and sidewalks are showing stains and grime, and by the afternoon, there could be quite a mess. So as Gina mentioned recently, the village has hired a power washing company to scrub all the sidewalks, bricks, benches, and to give us a fresh start. But how can we keep this from creeping up on us again? So I'm here to suggest the downtown crew. Just as the Highway Department has a tree crew and the Parks Department has a grass crew, we would like to start a new group of workers for the downtown area. Using a combination of existing parks personnel and new full-time and seasonal workers, the downtown crew will stay focused on the business district. The early morning work will still continue as usual, but it will not end there. The downtown crew will remain all day to clean this mess more thoroughly seven days a week. They will clean up trash and other messes and give much more attention to this location. In addition to this, we will buy our own power washing equipment to help keep the crime away. But is there really enough work for a whole crew to do? If in addition to the new pressure washing and litter pickup, we add in graffiti and sticker removal, and if we factor in weeding and mulching and watering, and if we consider our downtown area has several more streets than Main and Job's and includes parking lots as well, then yes, there is a great deal of work to do. The hope here is that we can make our beautiful village even more so. Downtown crew coming soon to a village near you.
Thank you very much, Gary. Deputy Mayor, you know, I want to thank you and thank you, Gary, as well for your effort on this. Is there anything you want to add or talk to the village about as far as how this downtown crew will work? How many more people will be in our downtown? What the goal of this is? If you can just give us a little more clarity as to exactly what the change is going to be and how this will improve the village, that'd be very helpful.
That's addressed to me.
You could take that, Gary.
Okay, just briefly, we've had discussions with Steve Phillips. And as I said, we kind of get out there early in the morning, we do our thing, and then we have to leave because we have to go to our parks or other areas. So what we're looking really at is taking an existing park person, make them a crew leader, could be a groundskeeper two or groundskeeper three. Steve Phillips will oversee the whole department. But this group would be three to four people that would go downtown in the morning, do the new blow-off, do the wash-down. And then they would go on during the rest of the day to continue picking up garbage or wiping down garbage cans or doing extra weeding, mulching, you know, anything we see. They would be done on Main Street and Job's. And then, of course, we would spread out into the other streets and into the parking lots. So the idea basically would be to keep our current groundskeeper two or three at a full-time laborer position and then bring on two seasonal. And this should allow us to man a three-person crew seven days a week, knowing each person would have two days off.
The only other thing I'd like to. The only other thing I'd like to add moving forward as far as the garbage is concerned, you will see later on in the capital budget, we have money allowed for the solar power bellies, which is going to be a tremendous help with the garbage situation, especially in the summertime. So normally, as Gary would attest to, during the summer, how many times do the crews have to come in to pick up garbage? You know, more than, it's not enough, just once a day in the morning. So that would also help alleviate the issue with the garbage pickup in the village downtown itself as well.
And Gina, I would add that Paul Murphy and I didn't manage to go to Port Jeff Village, and we did see how their operation is set up and we're more comfortable with the big bellies now. So I think they can be implemented.
Yes, 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 yes.
All right, great. Sorry about the echo there. So that's very helpful. We can keep on moving because we'll have an opportunity to discuss all the investments we're going to be making in our Department of Public Works to improve quality of life during our capital budget. But I'll let our Deputy Mayor, who's running point on our World War I Memorial Fund Drive, make a brief announcement here as to kind of how we're doing on the fundraising and where we stand. And then we have our third presentation with Trustee McGlock.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So before Thanksgiving, I'm sure everyone knows, we sent letters out to all the village residents informing them of the restoration project needed for the World War I memorial. And we, of course, are soliciting donations for this. Our goal is $400,000. It's going to be close up to that number in order to make the necessary repairs. And the community is showing up to date, we've already raised over $37,000. And that letter just went out not even two weeks ago. So I'd like to thank the community for coming together to donating to this, to honor those brave men and women who served our country. If you haven't already, please consider making a donation. If you are considering making the donation, please, if you can send it in, that would be terrific. We need to secure half the funds in order to sign the contract with the contractors. And of course, we'd love to get this project done before next summer, if at all possible. You could always, you could go to the homepage of the village website. There's a link there. We have a GoFundMe page, which is SHVWW1. It comes right up. Or you could just drop off a check or use return envelope that was sent in the letter that was mailed out. Any of those things would be great. Of course, a check is always nice. It is tax deductible, by the way. I have to mention that. I was told to mention that. You'll get a form for the tax deduction. But it's always nice to get the check because then we don't have to pay the fee also to the GoFundMe page. But however you want to send the money in, we'll take it. So as I said, if you are considering, I would really greatly appreciate it just so we can get this going. I would hate to see the memorial have that fence around it for another year as it has since the springtime. So I really appreciate that. Okay, so also, I'm happy to report this, although this isn't exactly the agenda item. We had a great community meeting at the police headquarters a few weeks back and to discuss a array of concerns and to listen to our residents. Acting Chief Hurtow and Detective Sergeant Lamison led the discussion. And one of the bigger requests that came up was the need for some new cameras. Our police department, they spent the time pricing the cameras out and the various options. And this week, I was able to sign the purchase orders, so they will be coming to Wynwood Way shortly. The cameras that were promised will be up there for the residents of that area. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Great job. And our third board presentation tonight is a leaf blower update. I want to thank Trustee McLaughlin, who has offered to help our board here look at our noise code as well as potentially even helping us look at process to license landscapers. And I'll turn this over to him and kind of update us as to his work and his conversations that he has had with various community members.
Thank you, Mayor. I did a few weeks ago sit down with a few people in the community, sit down with several landscapers as well as the planning commission. What is clear to me is something has to happen because as we all know, we get a lot of emails regarding noise complaints. That being said, the feeling I'm getting is the commercial industry has said to me point-blank that the technology is not there yet for year-round use. However, I did share with the board an article from Chicago Express that the village of North Haven is following in our footsteps and has adopted a legislation to ban gas leaf blowers for six months from May to October. One thing I did hear from the landscaping community was, at least the member that I spoke with, is that they would like to see licensing happen for a village, having a village landscaping license. I do believe this would help in many ways. However, our code currently says that we have to have the county license for people 18 over. I actually would like to have our new, if adopted, our new agreement to say that we have, we allow licensing to be permitted for people 21 and over. And the reason for that is I feel a lot of local people come and they do do landscaping for their neighbors, you know, during their college years. So I do not want to penalize the teenager or the college kid who was home this summer working for his neighbor. So I would like to see that be the first step. That be the first step. However, in terms of any further legislation in terms of the banning of gas leaf blowers, I do believe that this should be kept with the planning commission. I dispute with them for this study. I do not want to, if the technology is not there yet, I do think we have to look at other avenues in terms of enforcement. Only have one enforcement officer currently. So I do think we need to look as a board to hiring more enforcement. And we have to look, you know, a possible phase in of if we are going to go forward with any further regulation to phase it in. Because again, the technology is not there yet. So we have to be mindful of that, but we also be mindful that our neighbors can enjoy their backyards. So we have to, this issue certainly has to be continued to be addressed. And I did speak with Charlie today, asking for a walk-on resolution to amend our code in reference to the licensing for landscapers. And again, I would like this to have to be 21, not 18, for purposes as previously stated. In the interest of, I just want to add one more thing. Given that we are, have a lot of new and creative things coming forth this next year, I do want to propose to the board another walk-on resolution, which would be, I would, as, let me just say, Mr. Mayor, you appoint the entire board as liaison to the police. I actually would like to push forth an idea of actually a resolution to open up a promotional exam for all those who are qualified within the department. Since we are in the midst of a search for a police chief, I'd like to have a motion for a walk-on to put forth a motion for all those qualified in the police department for for the chief's exam for next year. So I do think that was two-on-one, but since I had the floor, I would like to have those two issues be heard. So the one being the licensing for our landscapers, the second being having a motion for those qualified individuals in the police department who would be qualified for the test. So do I have a motion for both of those, to move both those things?
Thank you very much for that. I want to clarify a couple of things. So that would occur at the.
Okay. Mayor, I'm sorry. I just had a question. If it's appropriate at this time.
No problem.
Thank you. Trustee McLaughlin, I just need to clarify your first motion concerning licensing of landscapers. You know, I don't think the, I don't want to give legal advice in open session or whatnot, but I just want to clarify what you're referring to about the age of people who can work for landscapers. What is your position concerning 18-year-olds and 21-year-olds?
So currently, the code states that you have the county license and you have to be 18 years or older to qualify for that license. I'm asking for an amendment. If the village does, if the village board does choose to adopt licensing for commercial landscapers, I would like to have that age threshold be 21. And the reason for that is because I do believe that there are young people who do help out their neighbors who would be affected if this limit was 18. And I do think that in conjunction with enforcement, which is a separate issue, that we can have, that we can discuss later on, but I do think the bulk of this matter still sits with the planning commission. I do know the town is looking at some similar legislation in terms of the gas power aspect, but I'm willing, I do want to continue the discussion.
I don't want to confuse the two issues. So the one issue is whether or not they should have gas-powered, you know, leaf blowers. That's one issue. But the village, so if you're suggesting that the village have a licensing or a permit process for landscapers to operate within the village, and then you want to modify it so from the town's perspective so that 18-year-olds can't work for them, they have to be at least 21? Is that, again?
No, that is not correct. That is not correct. I'm saying, I'm saying that you have to, you should have a permit for 18. I'm sorry, excuse me. You should have a permit for 21 and up. I believe 18 and 21 should be exempt. So does that make sense?
So an 18-year-old can drive around the village without a permit and do landscaping services, but if you're 21, you have to pay a fee and have a permit? Is that what you're suggesting?
That would be correct, yes.
Yeah, I think we need to talk about this a little bit more offline so I can understand what you're talking about.
Okay.
Thank you. Sorry, Mayor.
I would like a motion on the permitting anyway. That's okay. For a public hearing next year.
Care if I jump in here, Ken, or do you like to?
Well, I mean, it's, Mr. Mayor, I don't want to stop on your toes, but you're asking, Trustee McLaughlin, you're asking for a motion to set a public hearing on legislation that I'm not clear what that legislation is. I mean, and if you're asking me to draft it, I think this is a conversation we should have offline so that you can present it to the Board of Trustees so that they can, you know. so that they can, you know, intelligently make a decision on whether or not they want to set a public hearing.
I'm just saying that this is a feedback I'm getting.
Has financial consequences. You got to publish it, you got to, you got to pay for the newspaper, you got to do X, Y, and Z. I, I think it would be better for us to have a conversation offline to craft whatever proposed legislation you have, and then we can set a public hearing.
Correct, I'm just referencing, I'm giving the board an update as to how, I, I would like to set up, I, I would like to set up a public hearing and then we can craft that within the next week or so, but it could be either the second hearing of the month, it doesn't really matter to me. We can do the first hearing or the public, or the work session. I have no qualms about them. So, but couldn't we set a public hearing and then, and then we can, I can work with you between now and let's say the first of January?
I mean, I mean, you made the motion, if it gets seconded and it gets passed, I'm more than happy to, you know, more than happy to work with you. And even if it doesn't get seconded and passed, we can still work on it together between now and the next board meeting so that you can make your presentation as to what you're looking for, for a local law, however you want to proceed.
So I would like a second on that motion to, to put forth a public hearing to, to tentatively adopt a landscaping, landscaping licensing for the village. Do I have a second?
I'll just jump in here real quick. Great, great thought. I, I appreciate that you're, you're doing some research and some work about maybe how to help or, or revamp, you know, landscaping community as far as considering differences, but as you know, Ken pointed out, you know, first, obviously, we have an agenda. We've worked, we've worked very hard to keep our agenda out to the public. You know, seventy-two hours in advance, we wanted to distribute it to our board of trustees to make sure that everyone has a chance to review it. And then obviously, the process of amending a local law begins with noticing a public hearing, then obviously opening the public hearing, closing and voting on it. In this particular situation, I believe that our village attorney would probably also want to have a little more information. And if we are going to be amending our landscaping code and to license landscapers or to change, change the age or to have different town or, or county or the village manage our licensing program, which I think it's a really good idea to, to dig deep and to dig deeper here. I think this is a great opportunity to really amend our code book. And I think it would be a shame just to simply have a public hearing just to amend three years on, on an age. So I think what might make the most sense is maybe trustee McLaughlin have a conversation with their village attorney, work on the code, prepare the local laws that it can be amended, it can be noticed in a proper fashion. We could obviously put that in the paper, get that out and have a public hearing. So I think, I think you're on the right track. We really appreciate your efforts, but I'd like to do this in a more procedural way. That's more according with some of the standards that I think our, our village attorney is, is, is put forth. And again, we'd encourage you, I know you've been speaking with Charlene, our village clerk, you know, almost every day. I would, I would encourage you to maybe have those conversations and make sure that they get on the agenda. And we'd be more than happy to support you in that process.
Well, then how about putting it forward for the second meeting of January?
I think that, I think that'd be great and a great step would be to have a conversation with our council and make sure that we have a resolution on the agenda.
So do I have a second for the second meeting in January then?
Well, again, I think you should, Ken, maybe you want to jump in here, I guess you understand what I'm asking for, I think it makes sense to have a conversation.
I think that's playing time to have, with the council.
Trustee McLaughlin, my recommendation is that we, we, when I say we, me and you, talk about exactly what your, what your goal is, what your intentions are, so that we can craft some proposed legislation. And we do that before we set a public hearing. So this way, we're on the same page, we're not scrambling at the last minute to, you know, to, you know, put together legislation that satisfies what your intention is, and I think that's important. And since we're talking about landscapers, okay, we're going to have snow removal, maybe hopefully not a lot during the winter, but we're really talking about, you know, starting in April, May, April, probably May. So we, I think we have plenty of time and I think we can work together to put together some, some proposed legislation that satisfies what your intentions are.
Again, I'm just asking to set up again for the second meeting of the month and between now and that, we can craft that legislation, so it is prepared.
Well, might I add something? My, it just seems to me we're putting the cart before the horse. We don't even have a law that requires the licensing of any landscaper. So to be talking about an amendment to address the age of eighteen or twenty-one, when we don't even have a licensing law, seems to me we should address whether we want to license landscapers before we start worrying about how old they have to be.
We are required by the county to have a license, trustee.
Well, if they don't have licenses here in the village, anybody can come in and, and cut the.
But you are required to have the county license to operate as a landscaper.
Let me, let me, let me say this, a number of months ago, I had circulated to the board and quite honestly, I can't remember if it was before June of, of this year or after June, but I had circulated proposed legislation concerning the permitting. I'm not going to say license, but you know, to get a, to get a village permit to operate within the village as a landscaper. I had circulated that earlier this year. Let me recirculate that, have everybody take a look at it, especially trustee McLaughlin, since this is your bailiwick, so to speak. And, you know, let's, let's see if we can dress that up, you know, and move it along. But again, trustee McLaughlin, I, I don't think the timing is necessary that we have to pass this through in January when the real landscaping issue, in my opinion, and I could be wrong, is, is really an April, May, and then summer issue. But again, I, you know, I defer to the elected officials.
Yeah, I'm just relaying my issues with, I'm, I'm really issues, I'm getting from the community and it's a, they want some reform. And I'm also speaking to the landscaping community, so I would like to act, but if the board sees it not to act right now, that's fine.
All right, let's, let's keep on moving here because we have our, our public hearing tonight and.
Now, I would ask, am I second motion?
All right, so.
Regarding the opening of the chief's test?
All right, for that, so a few things, that, that's number three. I'm going to actually defer that to the chairperson of our police search committee, trustee Brown. And before I do that, I just want to comment on your other request again, which was about kicking the leaf blower legislation, the planning commission. Of course, we have a planning commission, obviously, it's their job to, to help assist the board of trustees. But I, I think, you know, as you said, the residents want some action now, so I, I would hope maybe we could do a little more digging before sending this to a different body. So maybe you can continue to update us. And I think it's our job as the elected officials to really move quickly and swiftly on this, regardless of what we decide to give our communities clarity, rather than passing this off to another group to maybe provide some, some cover for us. The planning commission is, is working on a number of things right now, including micro mobility, electric bikes. We're also asking them to assist with the steering committee of the comprehensive master plan. So they also have their hands full at the moment, so I'd love to keep this with the board of trustees and really take some decisive action regardless of what that is. But I really appreciate you reaching out to the, reaching out to the landscaping community and residents. But I, I get those emails, just like you do, and the residents are eager to hear us discuss this and to move forward regardless of what we choose.
So the permitting is the first step, so.
And then I'm just going to defer this third question to trustee Brown, she's the chairperson of the.
Mr. Mayor, before, before we move on to the third issue about the police chief position, concerning the, if, if I may, is that okay?
Please feel free.
So with respect to the leaf blowers, your current village code already addresses the timeframes in which we, a gas powered leaf blowers are allowed to be operated. So if you wanted to modify the dates in which gas powered leaf blowers are to be utilized, you'd have to have a public hearing and adopt a local law to amend the village code. And that includes if you want to eliminate gas powered leaf blowers altogether, that would also require the necessity of a local law, which would require a public hearing. So you could, you can defer the issue over to the planning commission or any other commission, you know, for a report and a recommendation, but I agree that those issues, because they do, would require a local law amendment, are rest with the board of trustees. That's all I wanted to say, thank you.
Absolutely, totally understand, we have to amend our code. We just want to make sure that before we amend it, we actually know what to amend, and that's why we want more input from the environmental community, the landscaping community and, and trustee McLaughlin, the liaison there. So he's just going to help us get to that point that we can have a public hearing and take some, take some action. We care about the issue and we want to address it effectively. So with that being said, I'm just going to turn this over to trustee Brown, who's done a great job and worked very hard on this police search committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, thank you trustee McLaughlin for your suggestion. And I would like to always lean on the side of wisdom from our legal. So I am going to suggest that we table that for this time until I refer to our attorney. And so I do want to talk about some things, but we can talk about that later. But to answer that question, I believe that should be tabled, that's a conversation that we need to speak with our labor attorney. And we'll have to address it in that fashion, but thank you.
Thank you, and I would just encourage you, you guys to speak as well. I don't know if you guys have spoken at all, but I would encourage you guys to communicate as much as possible so that our, our chairperson is, is on the, is on the same page. I don't know if you were aware, you knew of this or not, but trustee Brown would be great just for you guys to speak as much as possible, have as much open lines of communication, we'd love to see everyone communicating with each other.
Absolutely, I'd be delighted to do that. And just as a safeguard so the communication is clear, I would suggest that you just send us a email, that way I can bring it before legal and nothing is misquoted. Thank you.
So we are genuinely, so.
I'm suggesting that we table it till we refer to attorneys.
Well, if I, if I may.
All right, let's, let's keep on, okay.
I'm sorry, if I may, just a point of technicality. I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor.
I didn't hear what you said, I'm sorry.
Just, just from a, a technical point, trustee Brown said that we, we should table this. I think the issue is actually trustee McLaughlin had made a motion concerning the chiefs, you know, to, to set up a police chief exam. I think the issue technically is it has not been seconded and therefore it fails. So it's not, it's not a motion to table the issue, it's just that trustee McLaughlin had made a motion and it has not been seconded and therefore it fails. And, you know, for, for discussion at a later date.
All right, thank you, Ken. Ken's, Ken's been really digging in, he's been citing every portion of general municipal law, South Haven Village Code all day today with our, with our conversations. So let's keep on going, tonight is really about the, the capital budget. So I'd like to make a motion to open our public hearing regarding the two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three tentative capital budget. Is there a second? All in favor? So I'm going to like to announce this. Yes, we have some public comment. I'd like to.
I have a comment.
Okay, sorry, well, who's, it's just we got a little.
This is Kat. I need your permission to mute people in between when somebody's talking, can I do that, please?
Thank you, Kat, that'd be a big help.
You got it.
All right, Kat, I wanted to thank Kat too, we thanked just about everybody, but also wanted to make sure we thank Kat because she's really the person behind the scenes to make sure our public hearings go, go smoothly and she always does so without, without complaining and does a great job. So I just wanted to thank Kat for her work. So we've got a motion to open, actually, we, we have a passed motion here to open up the tentative capital budget. I'd like to just make a couple of quick remarks and then open this up to some comments from our board members as well as our public and our department heads who have graciously agreed to be here tonight. So the first thing I'd like to say is that this has been a collaborative process that we've worked with our department heads, our board of trustees, as well as some of our new team members such as Julie Kudrap, who is one of our accountants here. And what we wanted to do here is that in the past, when we had a capital budget, I'm sorry, when we had a capital request, it was done on a first serve, first come, first served basis. So a department head or a group of people would come into village hall and they would ask us for funds, for capital funds to purchase a plant, property, equipment, et cetera. However, unlike other municipalities and unlike best practices, we have never actually adopted a three-year capital budget. What this does is that it provides a layer of transparency so that every village resident and taxpayer could see exactly where the funds are going to go and at what timeframe they're going to be appropriated. This is a great thing also for our department heads because it allows them to help us as, as trustees to plan exactly what's going on. And so we have all of our departments laid out here, this is on the village website in a three-year plan. In addition, we, in our operating budget, we set aside nine hundred and seventy thousand, nine seventy-five thousand dollars each year to put into the capital budget. Now, because we wanted to do this three-year plan, we actually haven't appropriated any capital funds in over a year. So we can actually carry over nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars from the last year, we've been relatively efficient with funds. So other themes here that you'll see in the capital budget as we review it is that we wanted to first invest in quality of life and invest in our public works department, that's what we spoke about earlier tonight. We've got ample equipment here, I'll let, let our deputy mayor's liaison speak there. We wanted to make sure that we work closely with our acting chief of police Suzanne Herto to make sure that we had all of the requests for our police department in our capital budget and satisfied. So we're also very happy to invest in technology and equipment to advance our South Haven Village Police Department to make sure that we're one of the best police departments on Long Island and in the state of New York. We also have various fire investment here, EMS, and our building department and building maintenance department have also asked us to appropriate some funds and then we have some money here for the history museum as well. So I will perhaps turn this over to board members or Charlene or Julie, would you like to step in here? Or actually, Len, are you here maybe to present whatever you think is best, I'm happy to, to.
Mayor, I just wanted to like talk about the process and how we started and then I'd like Len to, you know, make some comments as well. He's, I know he is there, he, he does have an invite to zoom in this evening. I do have Julie with me, she's, she's off camera. But when we started this process, when, when, you know, in the past, the village had always made their capital purchases in a piecemeal fashion, where the department heads would come before the board when they needed a piece of equipment and the board would consider it and they would make an allocation out of the capital reserves. In the past, we've been, you know, spending down part of the capital reserves. We have about three point five million dollars currently sitting in our capital reserve accounts. Some of them are earmarked for fire departments, some of them are earmarked for regular village equipment lines. And as the budget gets adopted, we would make allocations out of each one of those categories of capital, of capital reserve. So rather than have a piecemeal ad hoc type of spending going on throughout the year, it is recommended practice to have a three-year spending plan, a capital budget projecting out three years and then adopting and funding the initial year and allowing spending in, in measured amounts in order to control and measure between what we have in balance in the capital reserves and what the village board has allocated each year in the budget for transfers to the capital budget, capital reserves. So we started the process during the budget, we asked the department heads to give us a list of their requests. We, they also gave us a ranking priority in what was more urgent, what needed to be purchased in this current year, what could have been projected out in the future years. We also had some input from the department heads, we had meetings, we compiled a list, Julie actually compiled a very large list of capital items. In the past, in addition to that, we were purchasing small items out of the capital budget, like, you know, gear for fire police, et cetera, which normally would be an equipment item in the operating budget. So we, we're trying to do as. So we, we're trying to do is move into the practice of having that funded through the operating budget and have large ticket items that have a useful life of, you know, multiple years to be funded through a capital plan and a capital budget. That's really the, the best practice. Uh, we met individually with the department heads and liaisons for each department, met with the department heads. We discussed it. We also asked for input from our head mechanic Kenny Zay. So, uh, in the capital, the preliminary budget, which was presented at the last meeting, um, is, uh, you know, we, we had some discussion on it. There's been in, input from the department heads since the budget. They want some changes. There's been some updates on prices. So there are a few amendments that we're going to be proposing this evening, which we'll discuss later on. And in addition, we did receive feedback from, um, the central garage on some vehicle equipment purchases that he felt really needed to be done. And we did make some additions to those as well. So we do have two electric vehicles in the budget, uh, which, uh, one for the buildings, uh, department, uh, an electric van and one for the, uh, building department upstairs for an inspection vehicle. And, um, we also have some, um, other water quality projects that would be paid for, um, through. So we have the budget broken down into two sections. We have the capital budget, which will be adopted and paid for through the capital reserves. And then we have some allocations, which we will call pay as you go or items that will be funded through the operating budget, either through surplus revenues or through allocations of, uh, contingency fund or, you know, uh, trustee special projects. So that said, um, uh, Mayor, did you want me to present the budget now? Or did you want to show the budget now? Or did you want me to bring Lynn in first?
Whatever you think is best.
All right, Len, would, would you like to, to make some comment about the process?
He's in, Charlie.
Good evening. Uh, I'm Len Zenantin. Thank you for the invitation to attend this, uh, meeting. Okay. I'm the chair of the, uh, Village Budget and Finance Committee. The committee has been working closely with the village trustee and treasurer, the mayor and the trustees on village budget matters in an advisory capacity. As such, we have reviewed the proposed capital budget and we endorse its adoption by this board. According to the Government Finance Officers Association Best Practices Guide, infrastructure, technology and major equipment are the physical foundation for providing services to constituents. The procurement, design, construction, maintenance and operation of capital assets are a critical activity of governments and require careful planning. Capital facilities and infrastructure are intergenerational in nature. That is, they serve current and future generations. Therefore, a multi-year capital plan is essential. The village has now embarked on a process for capital budgeting and planning that is multi-year and forward looking. The New York State Office of the State Controller has also issued guidelines for localities in developing an effective capital plan. These include developing a capital planning process, creating an asset inventory, prioritizing capital projects, assessing budgetary impacts, financing capital acquisitions, adopting a capital plan and budget and monitoring plan results. I'm pleased to report that the village's process and the plan itself are in lockstep with these government guidelines and best practices. As a representative of the committee, I was invited to department capital budget meetings and participated in these budget conversations and feel comfortable with the outcomes. Again, the budget and finance committee endorses this capital budget and multi-year plan proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Len. And thank you and the budget and finance committee for all of your, uh, your hard work as well.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sure. Mayor, would you like me to share my screen? I'm going to show the, uh, budget that we, uh, requested. And I think each one of the board members has a copy of the proposed adopted budget for this evening. I'm just going to share my screen so we can discuss it. So here is the, the capital budget. Um, we have it actually, I'm going to zoom in a little bit so you can see a little better. Each of the departments, it's classified by the department name, the description of the, um, item. This is the total request and this is how the grant is, the funding is to be, um, spread out over the three years and the funding source, whether or not, um, some of these are funded by a grant. It is our hope, as you see, we have, you know, justice court, there's a public safety, um, in, inspection vehicle. That's one of the electric vehicles we're discussing, uh, first responder vehicle for the ambulance, uh, corps. Um, a new ambulance that we're hoping to purchase this year with our, um, American Recovery Act funds. We're just waiting for, I want, waiting to find a, I'm waiting for NICO on a final decision. But I believe, uh, from what I hear that we, we can purchase a, an ambulance with our, um, our American resource, uh, grant funding. Um, we, uh, have some firefighting, uh, and firefighter, um, gear, et cetera. This is the request from the fire district. Um, we didn't, uh, actually present the outlier years because we're in the process of negotiating contracts and some of their, uh, capital allocations will probably change. Um, we also have, um, some equipment for highway. They need some infrastructure there. The, um, Chevy pickup truck here for parks, um, that was a, that was an omission. So that needed to be added. That was also at the recommendation of our, uh, our head mechanic, Kenny Zay. John Deere tractor also was a, a, an item that had to be added. The electric Ford, uh, van, we had this in his electric vehicle and we found out that they actually needed a van. So we had to change that up a bit. Um, and then we, it was recommended by the central garage that we purchase, uh, three police cars, one each year over the next few years. I understand that police cars are on backorder, um, six to eight months at this point in time. So our total budget is one point eight million dollars. Uh, we have three hundred and eight thousand that will be funded by grants and the one point five would come from our capital reserves. Um, as I said, we have three point five million in capital reserves plus the allocation we'll be making this year of the nine hundred and seventy five thousand. So it is our hope that, um, the, uh, funding through the years would, you know, the, the reserves plus the allocations would meet the, the capital spending requirement. The lower ticket, small ticket items that we, um, asked to be moved over to the operating budget um, are here. We have a small trailer. These are like, as you can see, smaller items, uh, a trailer. Uh, we have a gator for Cooper's Beach. That's our, our Cooper's Beach revenue this year exceeded, uh, the budget by about a quarter of a million dollars. So we're going to make about a twenty five thousand dollar investment back into Cooper's and some of the equipment, uh, chairs, uh, storage trailer, and they also needed a new gator, um, vehicle to drive between the beaches. Um, a generator that, that, uh, building maintenance needed to purchase. Uh, we also had some, body cams that the, uh, acting chief Hertau had, uh, done some research and found that they, they were available in, um, a three year capital lease and to be paid off over the three years. So, uh, she had presented a purchase order for those. And, um, two ocean rescue vehicles as a jet ski and, uh, when they wanted a radio upgrade, which we would also fund out of the operating budget. And, um, three of the, um, water quality projects that these were grants that needed to have a match. Uh, those would be paid for out of trustee's special projects and those would total a hundred and sixty six thousand dollars. So, um, that is the adopted plan that we're asking the board to approve this evening. It is our hope that, um, and well, it's not our hope, it is our, our, our goal that, uh, the 2022, 2023 capital budget will be adopted along with the operating budget. So that, um, within six months, we'll be doing this process again. And, um, I believe that is all I have. The, is there any comment, uh, Mayor, did you want to, uh, see if there was public comment on the budget or have any of the board members discuss?
We can do any of the above. We can, uh, have board members discuss. We can invite, uh, department heads in, uh, to discuss some, uh, specifics. Perhaps maybe, uh, so she can leave and get back, get back, uh, home. Uh, we can have our acting chief Hertau come in and maybe just talk to us real, very briefly, uh, about all of the equipment, uh, purchases for our police department and maybe just provide a little more specifics on, uh, some of the various, uh, software, uh, technology and, uh, and vehicle purchases.
Hi Suzanne.
Hi, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
That's good.
I am, I am home, Mayor.
Okay.
So, uh, what would you like, where would you like me to start?
Don't mind just running through the list of all of our capital purchases for, uh, SVPD. Maybe very briefly, because we don't want to stay here all night, uh, just maybe discuss exactly, uh, what they are and, and why we're purchasing them.
Okay. So, uh, very quickly, the commanderware software system, uh, that is a Motorola, uh, product. Uh, we have other Motorola products that we've already purchased, um, the body cameras, the in-car camera systems, our Motorola, uh, Flex CAD, uh, that should be up and running shortly. And it's also going, the commanderware software links all this stuff together. It, you have to look at it like the brains behind everything that brings every product together. When, uh, and it's going to streamline work, uh, quicker and it's going to be able to, we're going to be able to operate more efficiently and effectively uh, and get, get to calls quicker. Link, um, our South Hampton Village cameras together all in one, one unit. So we're looking to, uh, get that approved in order to move forward with all the other projects that we have.
Thank you. And, um, we obviously have, um, uh, vehicles appropriated each year. But, uh, my question for you is, you know, obviously, um, you know, we have, I just wanted to thank you, you know, for, for your help. It's been, uh, a pleasure, uh, to work with you. Um, and it's, uh, we've really felt that, um, things have really, it's just been a really strong experience. The deputy mayor and I, uh, had a meeting with you today and, um, you know, lines of communication are open. We think we've had some great meetings with the community, uh, and we've got some great feedback. And essentially, uh, you know, we want to make sure that when our officers, uh, say they have some needs, we want to make sure that we're providing them with all those needs. So is there anything that we, that was asked for that we didn't, that we don't have in this budget? Or have we basically over a three year period, uh, you know, provided our department with, you know, great technology, equipment, uh, anything else that the department is, doesn't needs? Or is this really accomplish, um, accomplish the goal of, um, making sure that we've got great capital purchases and equipment?
Uh, no, the, uh, the vehicles were the, were the big issue. Um, and after today's meeting, we, we kind of uh, figured that all out and, uh, you know, the police department, you know, I want to thank the, the village board for, you know, supporting the police department over the last couple of months. Um, and I also, you know, want to mention that the police department, uh, would not be able to provide, uh, a high level of professional service that our community deserves without the cooperation and guidance of each and every board member. So I want to thank each of you for, for that. Uh, and as far as the capital budget, you know, the police cars are, are, are a home run for us, uh, as well as the commanderware. And, um, I have in here also the Motorola records management system. The county, the county was going to provide us with the system, but it's not moving forward, uh, the way that they had hoped for. And there's other agencies jumping out. So I just wanted to have this in our capital budget in case we had to jump ship, uh, and, and switch to the Motorola records management system. That'll work all together with our current Motorola, uh, products that we have.
Okay. Thank you very much. And, you know, we want to make sure, we really appreciate, want to make, make sure when our patrol officers are in their vehicles, uh, they have, you know, top quality vehicles. They're long shifts. We have asked our officers, uh, to work. We want to make sure the computer and technology works. We want to make sure that the, uh, there's, there's, uh, no stalling of vehicles, uh, that when in their vehicles, especially in the cold of the winter, that they're, uh, that, that these, that the vehicles are up to par and that they're, uh, you know, not driving around in, you know, antiquated, uh, vehicles that are on their, uh, last leg. So we're happy to, you know, add these vehicles, uh, to, uh, to our fleet. And also want to thank Kenny Zay, uh, for his help in, uh, in evaluating our, uh, our vehicles. So I think everything worked out very well. Uh, great job to all of our, uh, department heads. I don't know if you'd like to, um, uh, any of their, our trustees would like to add any additional comment or we'd like to open this up for public comment. I'm fine doing whatever we need here.
Mr. Mayor, two of the big chunks in the budget are, are, uh, equipment for the ambulance department and new ambulance and for the fire department, the police fire truck. I just wanted, as a liaison to both of those departments, just indicate what's going on and, and, uh, I've met with Shane Fino Chiario regarding the EMS department. Uh, they have three ambulances which, which serve our community. Um, fortunately, it's hard to, not, not all the emergencies happen in a nice evenly spaced way. If you have a major disaster, suddenly you might need even more than three ambulances. So anyway, two of our ambulances were, uh, from 2008. And one of them in particular was having considerable, um, maintenance issues was continually up at the, uh, at the garage with Kenny Zay and his crew doing their fine work on it. But while that was happening, the vehicle forced out of service. And then another, then the other ambulance was in an accident on Hill Street. It hit and run, somebody hit the ambulance. So it became clear that we really needed to replace one of these old vehicles that was costing us a lot of money in maintenance. And, uh, we were very, very fortunate and hopefully, as Charlene said, we will be able to pay for that vehicle with some, a grant we received from the American Recovery Act, which would be very helpful to our budget if, if those funds come through and, uh, can provide us with a nice new ambulance, uh, to, to serve our community. As far as the, the fire department, uh, goes, the, uh, what's called the fire police vehicle, we have two of those vehicles now. They are the vehicles that, that are the first ones to arrive at the scene of an accident on Highway 39 or whatever. They're the vehicles that come, put out the cones, uh, bring the people to, uh, deal with any injuries or, or safety issues, uh, that, that may occur. Um, and again, we have two of those vehicles. Both of them are over 20 years old. There's been a great change in technology, uh, in the last 20 years in terms of what, uh, accessories one would bring to the, uh, accident. And those vehicles, when they're at the accidents, are the first ones to get there and the last ones to leave. Unfortunately, uh, these emergency vehicles, I was stunned when I became a trustee to, to see a, a price tag of 260,000 dollars for a vehicle. Uh, but unlike a Ford Tahoe where they make, uh, millions of them every year, these are basically custom made vehicles. And that's why they are so expensive. But in any case, uh, we've gone over this with Chief Callahan and the fire department. And, uh, it's, it's about time that, that one of these vehicles that are over 20 years old gets replaced. Uh, and I'm confident that, uh, this is a need that the, the fire depart, our fire department really, um, has researched and is justified. So, uh, that's my remarks on both of those expenditures.
Thank you, trustee Stevenson. Trustee, did you want to speak a bit about some of the public works, uh, investments?
Especially since it seems like we spend most of the money. But, uh, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody, especially Charlene and Julie, uh, working so hard on this. But it was really collaborative effort as well, uh, because each department had had their input and everyone came to the table. And it's really the right way to do business, so to speak, uh, that there is a plan. It is a best pack practice to adopt a, a capital budget. And I, I, as far as I know, and, and to my, the best of my recollection, this is the first one that this village may have even had. So, uh, moving, uh, uh, forward with that, I just, uh, you know, we have a plan and the plan would be, uh, is, uh, going to be implemented. Hopefully this evening we'll pass this. And, uh, much needed, um, uh, equipment will be replaced in time. It's not just a one year thing. It's a, it's a plan over, uh, uh, three years. I mean, some of this stuff, uh, might be a little different as far as sidewalks and curbing and things like that and with the highway department. But we have things to do with, uh, in parks that we know we have, uh, goals and, uh, with the capital budget, we can meet these goals. So that the, uh, the none of you be, uh, put aside. So I, I was very happy to work on this and, uh, I'd like to see it, uh, to move ahead. And once again, thank you, Charlene and Julie. I know how hard you worked on this.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And just want to briefly talk about, we have over three years and eight hundred thousand dollar investment in sidewalks and eight hundred fifty thousand dollar investment curbs.
Well, this is part of downtown beautification. And if you, if you look, uh, downtown, big part of it, uh, in the fall, as I, I spoke about before, was to clean what we have. Uh, a lot of, uh, the brickwork, uh, I mean, there's wear and tear. You could see there's, but there's, uh, a lot of the bricks have moved or settled, uh, and, uh, And that needs to be really taken care of, it's, it's, it's an eyesore. Also, we have a lot of broken curb around the village and this also needs to be replaced. And this is what we're working on, it's all part of beautification, part, part of the, the upkeep. And, you know, it, it needs to be upkeep. There's a lot of foot traffic now, as Gary mentioned, the increase in the population here, especially since COVID and a lot more wear and tear. Another big line item for highway is the drain cleaning truck. And in the past few years, you could see the big improvement as far as the draining, the streets have been all concerned. And this vehicle is very much needed in order to, to do the draining. So, and I'm very happy that the big belly trash cans are in the capital budget also. Instead of just, there's a plan and we're going to be implementing everything that we see here. And good things in, in parks also, we're going to have a gazebo for all the, those that enjoy Moses Park so much. So I'm, I'm very glad that we're keeping, we're moving with that. As most know, last year we were able to get that open after just the land just sitting there for five years. And, and Fox has been doing a lot of work there and that's the next improvement. So when people are out in the sun, they have a place to sit and enjoy in the shade as well. So a lot of good things to, a lot of good things to come. And as I said, it was a collaborative effort, input from the department heads and, and employees. And I look forward to getting all these things done.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Are there any other comments from the board? And we can do that and then we can move to some comment from our attendees. Okay, if there's no comments from board members, anyone who would like to join for a public comment here? Feel free to raise your hand and we could let you in for public comment.
Nicholas Palumbo is coming in. Hi Nicholas, you're in. If you'll start your video. And unmute.
Good evening, Nick.
My name is Nick Palumbo, I'm the chief of Southampton Village Ocean Rescue. I just wanted to introduce myself to some of the new board members and introduce my organization. Provide a little background and context for the capital budget request that, that we're making and that you're voting on tonight and that I hope you'll support. So Southampton Village Ocean Rescue is a relatively new organization in the village. We were founded in 2017 in response to a call from then-mayor Irving following two tragic drownings that occurred that summer, to prevent additional drownings in the village moving forward. And so with that, a number of community members came together, most of us former lifeguards, current lifeguards, surfers or just water people, who were committed to preventing those drownings. And we connected with East Hampton Volunteer Ocean Rescue, which is an organization that's been around for over 15 years. And really is a tremendous model for this type of service. And so with their support, we, we put together this group. A number of us, now 25 active members have become certified by the county as rescue swimmers. We've been training in various rescue drills and emergency response procedures. Have been coordinating with the other first responder agencies in the village. And we feel pretty good about what we've put together, but we're still, we're still building out. We still have capital needs, we still need to recruit additional members. And so some of what you're seeing in the capital budget request reflects those needs. Just wanted to talk a little bit, you know, the, the major item that we're looking forward to in, in this capital budget is the jet ski, which obviously would allow us to decrease response time for water rescue and also extend our reach. We have eight miles of oceanfront to protect here in the village. And as I'm sure you're aware, we have very limited coverage for a very short duration of time. A couple hundred yards of that is lifeguarded over the summer months. And the rest of the year, our entire oceanfront is unprotected. So that's, that's where Southampton Village Ocean Rescue is, is coming together. And then also take this opportunity to mention that we will be, as we have for the last four years, we will be providing water safety coverage for the Pearl of Bear plunge this coming Saturday. I hope to see some of you there. And I can provide a little bit of an advanced forecast for that event. So the good news is that the air temperature looks like it'll be 55 degrees, which is not too bad for this time of year. That's about the extent of the good news. The water temperature is lower 50s, looks like rain is in the forecast. Winds out of the southwest at 25 to 30 knots, seas five to eight feet. So it, it could be a pretty interesting day. Actually, as I was watching the earlier portion of the meeting, I got a text from Molly Bishop at Heart of Hamptons looking to talk about that event and, and the forecast. So again, hope to see you all there and we will be out in force and thank you for your support.
Thank you very much, Chief Palumbo. And also thank you for your service to Southampton Village Ocean Rescue and to the village. I know you'll, this will be your final term as chief and you've done an amazing job getting, getting people involved and getting the program launched and looking forward to working with you and, and whoever else is elected to be chief in the future. And we're very happy to satisfy the requests. And again, everything or anything we can do to help advance the program, we're happy, happy to help on. So thanks again for all your hard work and appreciate you helping us get this onto the capital budget.
Thank you.
I see we have Gary Gilleski raising his hand.
And here he comes. Hi Gary.
Okay, I just want to say thank you as well. A lot of the wish lists we've had for many years are on this list and we're very happy about it. A lot of the vehicles we, we really need, things are getting worn out. But I got to say, the things I'm really excited about are the, the curb money that's in there, the sidewalk money. A lot of these things that we can just never seem to get to is going to come to fruition finally. And especially one, one biggie out there is the village hall, ceiling of the brick, our village hall. You know, we've been, we ended for 100 years, really need some fixing up and I'm happy to get funding for that. And then lastly, the LED lights, we, we've been picking away at that, like $16,000 a year for five years. And this amount of money is going to allow us to complete that, a lot of savings for the village and a lot to get us back into night sky friendly compliance. That was it, short and sweet, thank you very much to approve this.
Thank you, Gary, appreciate the help. We're looking at the attendees, we'll wait a bit more just to see if anybody would like to, to jump in. Again, thank you to our, our department heads, I see Gary Gilleski here, acting chief Herto, chief Alfie Callahan. Thank you. And obviously, thank you also to our senior building inspector, Tin Ho, and our other department head, Steve Phillips, Paul Murphy, Bob Hand, and Shane as well from EMS. So thank you, everybody, and thank you to our board, thank you, Charlene, thank you, Julie. We'll, we'll keep going, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing in the 2022 to 2023 tentative capital budget. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, excellent, there are no communications to this board, but there is a suggested resolution, so I will let Charlene take these from here.
Thank you, mayor. Resolution number one, resolved that the clue, the claims for the warrant dated December 9th, 2021 totaling $659,642.76 warrant A-11 general fund, $360.03 warrant T-12 trust fund and $2,779.30 warrant CS2 special trust fund should be audited and approved. We have a motion.
Motion.
Second?
Second, second, second.
All in favor? Resolution number two, that the reading of the minutes for the public sessions of November 23rd, 2021 be dispensed with and accepted as filed with the village clerk. And the actions taken at that meeting are ratified and approved, we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Charlene, just a quick question, I may have missed this email, I, I didn't actually see the minutes.
They were sent out with the agenda package on.
Okay. If, if the board will bear with me, I just, I haven't had a, had a look at them, I didn't, I didn't catch them. So I'm sure they're fine, but I see them here. Wouldn't mind a table and this and put these in the next agenda, I just wanted to have a chance to review them.
So you're making motion to table?
I can make motion table, that would be, that'd be helpful, thank you and apologies to the board.
Do we have a second on the motion to table?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, resolution number, resolution number three, the board of trustees hereby approves the 2022-2023 capital budget as amended, as the capital, as, as the adopted capital budget. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number four, the board of trustees approves the extension of the outdoor dining in the village until Friday, December 31st, 2021, we have a motion?
Motion.
This discussion? May I just ask that, I think this is a great idea, it's certainly helpful. But I just think we really need to pay attention that it doesn't spread out, that the restaurants police themselves and, and, and keep their, their outside areas neat and tidy and don't just let them spread out all over the place. And so we can keep our village, that we, you guys have done such a great idea, great job making clean and tidy, keep it clean and tidy with the outdoor dining, that's the only thing I would, I would say, thank you.
Thank you, Roy.
We have a second?
I had one thing to that as well, before you vote on that, please remember that if we do get snow, the sidewalk has to be clear. Planters should also have been, you should be in the process of removing the planters from in front of the, your storefronts as well. Because if there's any damage, if the plow comes through, it, that is not our responsibility. So we're happy to keep this going, but we just need the cooperation from the restaurants. And I'll second that.
Thank you.
Thank you, I needed a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And I was waiting for you. Okay, let's keep on going, sorry.
Okay, resolution number five, resolved that the board of trustees approves Stony Brook Southampton Hospital, a New York run, state-run hospital, to be considered exempt from alarm charges. All fees and alarm charges are to be waived during the timeframe of October 3rd, 2017 through October 1st, 2021. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number six, the board of trustees appoint Tajaya Anderson to the position of senior office assistant to be used as a Florida and village hall at an hourly rate of $26 effective December 13th, 2021. We have a motion?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number seven, resolve that resolution adopted by the board of trustees on November 23rd approved the purchase of the building department software GovPilot, a cloud-based solution providing more accessibility and integration to meet the needs of the village and its land use boards. Cost prorated for the year, including annual subscription as described in the presentation. Funds to be utilized from the building department, A3620.4 is hereby amended to read, resolve the board trustees approves the purchase of the building department software GovPilot, a cloud-based solution providing more accessibility and integration for the land use boards, cost prorated for this year, including an annual subscription and annual payment in years two through five to a total of $107,200. As described in the attached proposal, all funds to be paid from the building department, A3620. Dot four, just as clarification, the mayor had made a recommendation that we reach out to the vendor to see if we can get a price fix for the annual subscription. They agreed to modify the contract, so the only change here is that the current year is still going to be $27,200. And then for the next four years, it is $20,000 per year and they, they agreed to lock the price in. So on that, do we have a motion?
Motion.
And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number eight, resolve the board of trustees approves the proposal for the topographic and hydrographic survey of Old Town Pond, Village of Southampton, New York from the firm of Nelson Pope and Board Engineering Architecture and Land Surveying PLLC. At an initial cost of $22,350 retainer fee and survey paid from trustee special projects, A1010 fourth, point four three three, NMP will commence its services in accordance with a mutually agreed project schedule and the tasks outlined in the scope of services upon receipt of the signed agreement, including a copy of the proposed acceptance form and all exhibits. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hold on, sorry, quick this, quick discussion if that's okay with everybody. Surely, I just want to confirm, this is a great, great survey for a application, we have the town CPFW2IP grant, but we actually already have the, the grant application into the town. And they should be deciding and dispersing funds momentarily. I just want to confirm that, I think like the sewer reimbursement we got, that if we are awarded this grant, they will, they will be reimbursing us for this expense. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, they would.
Okay, excellent.
Jen Messiano did ask that we did not physically expend funds, so we're just approving the contract and we'll hold off on the purchase order until we get the contract from the town.
Okay, excellent, thank you, Charlene.
Correct, correct, so, so if we expend funds in advance of the approval, that would not be reimbursable. So that's why we have to hold off.
Okay.
We are, we are expecting to get the contract before the next meeting in January. So if we approve the contract, if we approve the proposal, we can move ahead with having the work done. We just will not issue a purchase order until the contract's signed.
Thank you.
Okay, so do we have a, I think we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number nine, the board of trustees approves the, a stipend to be paid in the amount of $5,000 for Derek Highsmith for assuming additional duties in the building department and, as agenda coordinator. Since Jackie Allen, our, our planning, building department secretary has been out on family leave, Derek has stepped up and this came from a recommendation from the department head that he, because he's assumed the additional duties in the interim for a stipend to be paid for compensation. So do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Sorry, I, I like the one more quick discussion point, I, my apologies. Derek has been working extremely hard and we, we have a lot of building department revenue coming in. We're having a, another record year. And I was actually hoping to ask this board if we can actually increase this to 7,500. I, I do think that he deserves it and it's the least we can do, given that he's working extremely hard. And I would love to just recognize him for, for his work. So I, is that, is that something that we would be okay with, sorry to put everyone?
I'll second that.
Okay, so I guess I'll make the motion to amend to 7,500, so here a second from trustee McLaughlin.
Okay, so all in favor on the resolution as amended?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Resolution number 10, resolve the board of trustees approves the proposal for the board of architectural review and historic preservation to utilize Sally Spanberg as their historical consultant to the BARHP as recommended by Jeff Broadleaf, chairman. The fees are as follows, $150 per initial historical demo, demo permit and 300 to 300. and three hundred to five hundred for more full-blown complex report if required. Services will be utilized on a project basis. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, resolution number eleven, resolved that the Board of Trustees appoints James Strong to a full-time laborer position in the Highway Department at a salary of forty-three thousand, two hundred and ninety-three dollars and thirty-one cents, effective December thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number twelve, the Board of Trustees approves the agreement for the South, Village of Southampton and C D M Smith and Y to be related to Phase Two Lake Agawam permeable reactive barrier to be extended to March fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two, at no additional cost to the village. Do we have a motion?
Mayor, I don't, I'm sorry. I don't know if you want Gary Gillespie to speak on this issue, or is it just?
We're okay here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number thirteen, resolve that the Board of Trustees approves the attached budget modification, number one-seventy-seven for fiscal year and May twenty, May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two, for various budget line shortfalls, total transfer and the amount of twenty thousand dollars. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Discussion. I just want to know what the shortfalls were.
Excuse me?
I just want to know what the shortfalls were in the, in the twenty, twenty thousand.
Actually, these were not, the, the, this was a budget amendment. The second one was actually a shortfall. First one, this was the twenty thousand dollar amendment is actually the amendment we discussed regarding the excess revenue from Cooper's Beach. We brought in about two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars over budget at Cooper's this year. And at the end of season recap, Matt, our, our bill, our each manager had requested that we purchase some infrastructure items. I believe it's a, a, a few. I'm sorry. Some, some, a Cassone trailer, a few of the, he also had some overages in some of his, in his salary lines, and I think he wanted to also purchase some chairs and beach items, et cetera. Chairs and umbrellas.
Sir, any other discussion?
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number fourteen, resolve the Board of Trustees approves the attached budget modification three-seventeen for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two for various budget lines, a total of fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and forty-one dollars. That is listed in the budget packet here. We have ten thousand dollars in zoning board legal fees. Equipment for the clerk's office, we, two thousand dollars, we've had two computers that have died on us. Traffic control expenses and the amount of thirty-three thousand dollars, that was due to a county contract that we have. I was made aware by DPW Director Gary Gillespie that we are required to make repairs as needed and directed by the county, and we received two rather large repairs on some traffic signals and some overtime in the ambulance that was required. That totaled fifty-nine thousand, nine forty-one, and that is in the agenda packet as well, with the detail of each line item. So do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number fifteen, resolve the Board of Trustees appointed Lydia Palmer to the position of temporary clerk in the mayor's office at a rate of twenty-five dollars an hour, effective November twenty-third. The resolution is amended to read, resolve the Board of Trustees appoints Lydia Palmer to the position of Office Assistant in the mayor's office at an hourly rate of twenty-five dollars, effective November twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one. Civil Service had reclassified her title to be a Office Assistant. So they no longer use the, the title clerk, so they asked us to make the change in title, and that is the only change to the resolution. So do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have one add-on resolution, supplemental resolution, which is was, was, was brought to me suggested by trustee Arresta. We had a proposal, we received a proposal from a, a firm called C G R Pro- C G R Promising Solutions, Government Education and Public Finance Consultants on consulting and doing a study on the organizational plan for the DPW Department. And they gave us a proposal in the amount of seventeen thousand dollars to be paid by to be paid by special, trustee Special Projects, A ten-ten four-three-three. So we're adding a resolution to accept their proposal, which was in the packet I provided in the supplemental agenda this evening. So do we have a motion to add this?
Motion.
Agenda. And a second?
Second.
All in favor of adding the supplemental resolution?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and on the resolution to approve the proposal for C G R Promising Solutions at a total cost not to exceed seventeen thousand dollars for DPW organizational plan. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Discussion.
Trustee McLaughlin?
Just to what degree are they, you said they're going to bring us suggestive organizational issues? Do we know what they are? Have they, given us a preliminary idea as to what the scope of their role will be?
I believe that they're going to be looking at the resources and proper use of staff and equipment. There's been somewhat of a trend to kind of consolidate DPW departments under one umbrella, instead of having everything compartmentalized to be able to use staffs, to be able to cross-train staff on different functions. You know, some positions can be used across different divisions. And, you know, in effect to, you know, try to control overtime and to make the department more efficient.
And where's the timeframe of the study?
They, 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 the time, the timeline they gave was approximately three months.
Thank you.
So on the agenda, I'm on the resolution, do all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and there's one mayoral appointment for this evening. Resolve the Board Trustees appoints Willa Bernstein to the Planning Board, effective December ninth, twenty-twenty-one, with an end term of June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six. This appointment fills the vacancy made by trustee Roy Stevenson, whose term ended June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
One quick discussion item, and this could be for Ken too. If, first, if this is, the term ends on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six. It's actually not a, well, it's, it's a vacancy, but, but the, the term has also expired, so it's a, it's a new term. But I just also wanted to make sure that this is the, the correct timeframe, twenty-twenty-six. We, I didn't have a chance to pull through past resolutions to see when the term expired. It sounds like this resolution expired June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one, but just wanted to confirm that it is an expired term and not a, a current term that actually is still in, in effect and maybe expires at a, at a shorter date. The terms are five years for the planning board.
Un- un- understood, but if, 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 if it was a term that expired in July of twenty-twenty-one, and it's a five-year appointment? Well, Roy, and it's Roy Stevenson's position?
Yes.
All right, well, technically, he would be a holdover, but because of his acceptance as a position of trustee, he then creates a vacancy. And it would be a, an appointment for the remainder of his term. So if you're filling the position of his term, it would be until
Well, that's, that's my question.
June, June, June of twenty-twenty-six.
My question is, is, is the term, is, has the term expired or has, is the term still in effect? And I guess my question is, do, do we know when Roy was, was, was first, was originally appointed? Again, I didn't have a chance to pull the past resolutions, but just wanted to confirm that's the, that's the correct date.
That was the date that we had in, 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 on our schedule, mayor.
Okay.
I, I don't know the answer to the question as to when he was originally appointed. I, I have not looked at those documents. I have not been asked to look at those documents.
We, we actually have a sheet here that I use, that Mimi has compiled, that keeps track of everybody's term and when it expires.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Member, before we go on to what time it is, I just want to say one quick thing.
Is this part of the discussion? Because we haven't voted yet on this.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so you want, we can take the vote here and then? All right, great. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then? Trustee McLaughlin, I would encourage you, you have, you have your comments just coming up. I know we have trustee Arresta and trustee Brown first, but would you, would you like to go ahead of them?
I actually just want, no.
Trustee McLaughlin, can you unmute, please?
Ken, I don't believe our, it was listed earlier in the meeting, were formally resolved. So I did, I, I will withdraw my, withdraw my first resolution regarding the landscapers. I actually request Charlie to do a placeholder for the next meeting for discussion items. And then possibly for a resolution, given we have a tentative drafted legislation, and I, I do want, I know trustee Brown did make a resolution table, however, my second resolution, but I do, I would like a formal vote on my, on my initial resolution for the promotional exam. That was not formally resolved.
My, my, I'm looking, I'm looking at my notes from earlier in the meeting, and correct me if I'm wrong, but
We didn't vote.
No, none of your motions got a seconded. So there was no vote on them. So one was concerning licensing landscapers. The second one for mine was concerning scheduling a police department exam for the chief of the police department. And the third had to do with leaf blower regulation, local laws. My understanding and recollection from my notes is, of those three separate issues, none of them were seconded. And if they're not seconded, they're not going, there, there is no vote in front of the board. Charlene, am I misremembering the history here?
No, that would be correct.
So trustee, trustee, what would you like to do at this point?
So I, I would like to make a motion to withdraw, withdraw my first resolution. I also would like to
I'm sorry, trustee.
Respectively, as the board again, I know trustee Brown should make a motion to, to, to the table, but I would like a motion as to my, my initial resolution as for the
Trustee McLaughlin? Which, which were, of the three resolutions, which one do you want to withdraw?
The first one about the landscapers.
About licensing of, of landscapers?
Correct.
All right, quite, you know, since there's been no second on any of the motions, there's no real requirement for you to withdraw. But if you want on the record to show that you're withdrawing that resolution, that's fine. Okay. So what I hear is you're withdrawing your request for a resolution, resolution to consider a local law concerning the licensing and permitting of landscapers. Is that correct?
Yes, I'm asking Charlene to, to earmark that for the next meeting.
Well, that's, that, I mean, that's, that's a different issue. That's, that's an agenda item that, you know, the mayor and, and, and the village administrator will determine what goes on the next agenda. Your second issue, and maybe I'm taking it out of order, was concerning the regulation of gas powered leaf blowers, which I believe, based on the conversation, you wanted to defer back to the Planning Commission to get additional recommendations and information. Is that correct?
My clarification was that I am deferring the issue of the leaf blowers to the Commission for further study. That was never a resolution.
Okay, great. All right, so the leaf blowers, we're asking the Planning Commission to take a look at and report back with a report and recommendation to the Board of Trustees. That's not a resolution.
Correct. That was, this is part of my presentation.
Okay, the third issue had to be with, you had made a motion to request a police department exam for the position of Chief of Police for the Southampton Police Village of Southampton Police Department. You had made that motion, and it was not seconded in my, from my recollection. Is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
So I, I would like, I would like that formally to be known, that I made a motion and the board is not going to react.
Okay, and my understanding is because there is a, an active search committee for a police chief, and we have an acting police chief, that your motion is not, has not been seconded, and that the village is awaiting a report and a recommendation from the committee on the search of a police chief. Is that correct?
I have not been made of any timeframe as to when that report may be given.
I, 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 I'm not aware of a timeframe presently, you know, as we speak here tonight, but my understanding is that your motion has not been seconded, and we, the village, are still awaiting a report and recommendation from the committee of the search committee. Is that correct, mayor?
I would have actually deferred that to, to trustee Brown.
Would you ask the question again, please?
The question was whether or not the village mayor and Board of Trustees are awaiting a recommendation from the Police Department Chief Search Committee on their recommendation. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so at this point, I don't think there's any further action to be taken on that issue.
On the record, there are a lot that my motion is on anyway. Okay.
Well, yeah, sure, absolutely. Trustee McLaughlin, the record can reflect that you had made a motion. It was not seconded, and therefore no action was taken on that motion.
I'll appear in the minutes, trustee.
Thank you, Ms. Kegelbeck. Anything further?
No, Mr. Mayor, please commence with the comments.
Okay, thank you very much. We now have comments from board members. The first series of comments are from trustee Arresta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to also welcome Karen Bontempo. She's been a terrific addition to Village Hall, and she fit right in, and is she's been taken under Kathy's wing and learning all the ropes, and everybody, it's just a great place to walk into. Everybody's so happy. And I'd like to also thank once again Charlene, Julie, and also Len, Chairman of And I'd like to also thank once again Charlene, Julie, and also Len, uh, chairman of the budget and finance committee for working so hard. I'm so excited. We have capital budget. It seems like we've been working on this, uh, just to, to get it right. And I, I think it is. And, um, very excited about this. It's, it's all about being physically responsible and, um, it is a best practice and, um, I'm very excited about it. So thank you all for all the hard work you put into that. Uh, the past Thanksgiving weekend, uh, we had a truly extraordinary Saturday here in the village. It helped, uh, to help kick off the holiday season. Uh, it was a fantastic day and I'd like to thank the Chamber of Commerce, which hosted various, uh, fun activities. That included the artisans market, Kirsten Lonnie, who hosted a holiday concert at the, uh, the cultural center. Uh, thanks to Joe Diamond and all the folks at the art center for working with Molly and Heart of the Hamptons for an afternoon games. Um, I even heard Mrs. Claus stopped into the Southampton Historical Museum for, uh, story time. Uh, the parade and tree lighting were phenomenal and I'm, I'm so proud of our village for it. Everyone was, came together for such a terrific celebration. Thank you to Liz Burns, uh, at the, um, in the Rogers Memorial Library for donating, donating books and crafts. And Karen Conley of the, uh, Chamber of Commerce, Tom Edmonds of the History Museum, and of course our Department of Public Works for making our village so beautiful and to Charlene and Miranda that really put the whole thing together to, uh, to have this great day. And I hope that we can make this an annual event. Uh, toys for tots, uh, today, Kathy or Deputy Clerk and Karen or Clerk and Karen or Deputy Clerk went to, uh, they had a wonderful lunch at, uh, hosted by the Long Island Village Park Association uh, at the Marriott in Melville and, uh, they brought the toys that were collected at the Village Hall that were donated and picked up, uh, at that day, uh, by, today by the US Marines. And they were actually delighted to have three servicemen destroying them at their table, uh, for lunch. So that was great. I know Kathy had some pictures. I hope at some point they could, um, perhaps be posted on the website, uh, for all to share. Uh, the toy donation box, uh, is still located in the Village Hall lobby, uh, lobby. So you are not late, too late. If you didn't drop your toys off, uh, yet, please do so. And, uh, not that we're competing with Stevenson's toys, because I know they have a Toys for Tots, uh, box as well. Uh, so there's many opportunities to donate, uh, to the Toys for Tots. So, uh, thank you all for your generosity. And, uh, since this is the only meeting this month, I'd like to send my, um, happy holiday wishes to, uh, for everyone to enjoy a beautiful season. We had a terrific kickoff to it, as I just said, and, uh, um, I just hope for everyone to have a happy holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Arresta, trustee Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Happy holidays, everyone. I'm so excited for this time of season and we're so grateful. We had a wonderful event and I want to thank everyone that participated in it. I want to thank our police force. I think our numbers were absolutely swelling for, uh, the weekend of Thanksgiving and the village was kept safe and orderly. So I want to thank all of our police force. And I also want to agree with Lieutenant Hurtow for mentioning the, um, relationship going forward, being one of harmonious between the trustees and our police station. It's so great to have that recognized by you, acting chief. So thank you so very much. I think that all of, I can speak for all of the board, feeling that we feel the same way about our relationship and looking forward to making things better with our police force. Uh, and on that note, I, um, would just like to say to clear some things up. I want to first thank the board for unanimously voting for the search committee. And I'd like to thank everyone for their patience. It is a delicate, um, uh, procedure that we are going through. And there is, uh, confidentiality that we have to keep for those that have our applicants. It's critical to ensure confidentiality during the interview process for many reasons. And, uh, personal information such as home and email address exposure should be kept to a minimum. Applicants are not candidates. We have to understand applicants are not necessarily candidates. So we have to respect that they, um, not everyone is going to be our next chief and they will be going back to their, um, their places of work. We need to respect that. And we don't want to have any confusion. We don't want any rumors falsely spread about individuals that are interested in the status or candidates that do not prefer to external parties to interview process known as to understand their status or either the acceptance or not moving forward in the process. So I just wanted to make that clear for all. I know there was some discussion and that's why this is a board of transparency and clarity. So thank you so very much. And on the second note, I'm excited about Southampton Village Climate Action Committee. Southampton Village Climate Action Committee continues to work with the village planning commission on adopting the New York State Stretch Code, which would help to underwrite cost of transitioning to more green future for Southampton Village. Similarly, the group learned about Southampton Town's plan for substantial electric power through the community distributed generation program, which includes potential for the village to piggyback on the town's proposal. Both topics will continue to be monitored by Southampton Village Climate Action Committee. And the group's bike lane plans, which I'm quite fond on, continues to move forward with select members meeting with New York City Department of Transportation employees to hear about possible routes, plans to engage the community as well about the previous routes and potential dangerous interactions. They have a meeting with Gary Gliskey of the Village Highway Department to learn more about previous bike lane plans as well as potentially dangerous interactions. So I'm looking forward to that. And last but not least, we're so proud, I'm sure, our entire village as well as the trustees of Main and Prospect, a new business for our downtown. We're so glad that our downtown is prospering and there's a new business there. So we just want to give you a shout out. The place is beautiful. The food is great. Had a great time. I invite all. Thank you and happy holidays to everyone.
Thank you, Robin. Happy holidays to you too. Um, next is trustee McGlocklin.
Thank you. I, I, I too wanted to draw my colleagues in saying that the, um, the event, um, like, you know, weekend happened. Um, I remember going up, going to the event every year. It was always very festive and, you know, every year it gets better and better with the newer decorations and, and, and the hard work. I do want to mention, of course, uh, Bill and Anoni, who have dedicated over 40 years of their, think that, um, you know, they and trust, former trustee parish, Paul have also done a great job as well. Um, as well, as well as Molly Phillingham and others. Um, I also would like to, um, extend of course, a very, uh, the best luck to Ben and Sean, the main project, as trustee Brown had mentioned, it's great food and a new, um, a new restaurant. I too remember as a kid going there, it was John Duck. So, um, I wish them all the best and years of success. Um, and to close, I want to wish everyone, my colleagues and the residents, a very happy holiday and a very happy and healthy and safe new year. So with that, happy holidays.
Thank you very much, Trustee McGlocklin. Uh, next is trustee Stevenson.
Yeah, I'm mute. I think that's working, right? You hear me?
Yep. Yes, Roy.
You got me muted. Okay, cool. Um, I just wanted to, I didn't really say much in the, um, in trustee McLaughlin's presentation on the leaf blowers. And I appreciate the work he's done on that, uh, to, um, to interface with the landscapers. I, and I understand the landscaper's concern, uh, that the gas powered leaf blowers, uh, may not be as powerful as battery powered ones. But I really feel that we have to, uh, prioritize the concerns of the citizens over those of the landscapers. And for them to say that the technology is not there yet, I think the technology is there. It's called a rake. Uh, before we had gas powered leaf blowers that we did perfectly fine raking up the leaves and putting them in piles. And to have our community, uh, peace and harmony disrupted during this season by the, the sound of angry hornets of leaf blowers going off at, uh, in the morning, I, I just don't get it. And I don't understand why we are sending this issue back to the planning commission. I, I support the mayor's, uh, suggestion that this is a matter for this board to consider and a matter of importance to so many of our residents that we shouldn't, uh, have to send this back to the planning commission who are already doing work on the master plan and, and other things. And, uh, this is something we should investigate a little bit more ourselves. So I, I would encourage trustee McGlocklin to view it in that regard. Uh, I'd also like to, uh, just give a shout out to, uh, as, uh, Nick Palumbo mentioned in, in his presentation, the, uh, polar bear plunge is this weekend. A lot of hearty souls are going to go out and try to raise money for the heart of the Hamptons. It's a critical season for the heart of Hamptons. This is where they raise a large portion of, of their funds. Uh, and, uh, it certainly is, uh, important at this time of year, uh, at the holidays that, uh, the work they do is so valuable in terms of ensuring that, uh, nobody goes hungry and that no children, um, feel forgotten at this special time of year. So I give a big shout out to all of those who will be participating in the polar bear plunge, uh, and hopefully it won't be too nippy down there. Um, and as for toys or tops, as trustee Arresta said, uh, generosity of the community has been fantastic. It's so great that the collection boxes are all around the community. I know there's, there's boxes here at Village Hall, Assemblyman Fred Thiel has them as his office. We have some boxes down at our store. Um, we will be driving our, our boxes to the marine, uh, basin, bay shore. Uh, their, their, their collection point, I think the last date is the 16th of December. So they get the toys in time and can distribute them before Christmas. So there's plenty of collection places and thanks to everyone who has donated already. I know we've, uh, picked up several thousand dollars of donations, which is just so great to make every child's, uh, Christmas just a little bit brighter. Their holidays just a little bit brighter. So thanks to all who have given that. I want to extend my wishes to everyone for a very happy holidays. Thanks for, uh, your wishes towards us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, trustee Stevenson. Um, appreciate your, uh, your comments this evening. And, um, well, I have a few comments before we, uh, we wrap this up. The first thing is very busy day today, very busy week. Um, this morning had a, uh, 8:00 AM, uh, call with the, um, Lake Agawam Conservancy to review some progress we're, uh, making for Lake Agawam. And actually, one of the things that came up was resolution 12, which is the Lake Agawam Permeal Reactive Barrier. And, uh, after the, uh, CDM Smith study that we actually received the grant money from the CPFW QIP fund, uh, we've identified a parcel of land that has a high concentration of nitrogen in very shallow groundwater. So it'll be the, uh, not every place is acceptable for a PRB or Perme reactive barrier. Uh, very fancy technology described wood chips being placed into the ground to create a barrier to prevent, uh, groundwater and nitrogen from, uh, or nitrogen, uh, groundwater from getting into the, uh, the lake. And there's a, a plot of land, uh, on the, uh, north side of the, uh, of the lake. That'll be perfect, uh, for the, uh, the PRB. Uh, so we're going to continue to move forward and, uh, that should be a, uh, substantial piece of help for the lake. And then also excited to be working with, uh, Gary and Chick and McLean engineers to, uh, finalize the Gin Lane Stormwater Runoff Project and also Clean Water Committee to identify additional areas of, of, uh, Rotoranoff that we could address. Uh, number two, um, wanted to welcome Sally Spanberg, back to our ARB. Uh, we're very happy that she's joining us personally. While it's just a single resolution, I think this is a great thing for the village. So she can bring her, uh, historical knowledge and guidance there, be. Thirdly, just a quick, uh, follow up. Um, I just wanted to, I have a call, uh, tomorrow, uh, with, uh, Mayor Jeff Sander, uh, of North Haven. This was one of the packet that, uh, Trust McGlocklin handled out. So I just wanted to invite, uh, Trust McGlocklin to join me on that call with, uh, Mayor Jeff Sander of North Haven. North Haven is doing a lot as far as leaf blowers and, uh, landscapers. So, uh, be great for, uh, for you to join me there. Uh, that's another thing. And then one thing that I actually forgot or didn't see on the resolutions tonight, uh, is a very important project with, uh, Rue engineers. It was on our capital budget, but we actually moved it to a, um, an operating budget item. So, uh, if, um, as soon as I finish it up, it might be great to add this, the Old Town Pond dredging permitting and bid documents. Be nice to pass that resolution. We don't need to fund it right away, uh, but it'd be nice to have that so that Rue and our clean water committee is ready to go. And then one other thing I wanted to bring up to the board, uh, is that there's a, a public hearing, uh, that I'd like to, uh, schedule our next, uh, next board meeting. I didn't have enough time to get it on the agenda today, uh, but we wanted to look into amending our local law, uh, that talks about, uh, building permit fees. Um, after doing some research and speaking with Bill Mangor of the steering committee, uh, for a master plan, we realized that we actually haven't updated, uh, our building department fees for quite some time, despite the fact that we're in the midst of a building boom and despite, despite the fact that it's becoming quite costly for our building department, uh, to maintain and to inspect. And we have an increased, uh, demand, uh, for inspections and certificate of occupancy transfers. Uh, so what I'd like to propose is something of the like where, uh, right now, uh, all, uh, construction is, uh, you'd get a permit at the fee of one and a quarter percent for everything. So what I'd like our board to think about and get back to me so we can, uh, notice a public hearing and, and have one is what type of changes we'd like to make. Uh, what I propose is keeping zero to $100,000 the same, no change. Uh, but as you, uh, as a tier level, as you increase, we can increase to one and a half. Uh, and we could increase maybe further for very large, uh, projects over a million or $5 million. Just in that, in that tranche. But again, I'm open to suggestions, uh, but even a, uh, a small, um, increase, uh, could increase revenues for the village and/or a lower taxes, uh, and also not increase the price so dramatically high on building, uh, permit applications. Uh, another thing that I think would certainly make sense, uh, I know a lot of people complain about demolitions. Uh, the cost of, uh, demoing homes is quite low. Uh, it looks like it's, uh, $100 for every, uh, 100 square feet. So I think it's certainly time, um, that given all the demolition work that's going on in the village, particularly if this is something that we want to encourage or discourage, uh, we could make a small increase to, to that fee, maybe to, to 200 or 100 square feet or 250. Again, this is all for discussion, but I think this would add a lot of, um, revenue for the village. And then on top of that, uh, I noticed that the tennis court fees were, uh, $1,500 for a tennis court permit. Uh, I think if, uh, we increase that to 3,500, it, uh, would be a, a small adjustment, but also help us raise a little bit more money in our building department to help compensate us for, uh, all the work, uh, that, uh, that we're doing. And again, very small, uh, fee, uh, if, if you're going to be, uh, installing a, um, a tennis court. And then we would of course not, uh, want to increase any fees on, uh, on businesses, uh, and not make it harder for, uh, smaller projects to, uh, to move forward. Uh, so again, we hope that that's fair and also reasonable, but I'd like our board to get back to me. And then again, we could, uh, notice that a public hearing and, and have it. But those are some initial thoughts. Uh, we'd like to hear from Tin, uh, our senior building inspector. Uh, I've spoken to him about this as well. Uh, he thought this was, uh, a good idea. He had some other suggestions. So we'd like for him to, to provide them to us and, and of course, uh, move forward with this public hearing with his guidance and, uh, and blessing. So I believe that is it other than one last, uh, one last, uh, issue here. Uh, Ken, if you've got something, I'm happy to, uh,
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I just want to jump in. Uh, obviously, a- any, any fees that you're suggesting, you know, should be reasonably associated with whatever the cost of the expense of, of issuing those permits and whatnot. So we, we, we can have further discussion with, uh, with the building department and, uh, and the board. Thanks.
All right. Excellent. Uh, and then lastly, uh, again, our, our Christmas decorations, uh, looked outstanding. Our, uh, building, our, uh, public works department did a nice job. I think for next year, we should go from very good to even better. And, uh, I'm talking to Bob Hand about some ideas like a candy cane lane on the corner of, uh, Newton Street and just really take the amazing looking village we have and, and make it, uh, even better. So that being said, those are my comments for tonight. Uh, wanted to wish our board and our residents a happy holiday. The only thing I would go back to is before we adjourn this meeting, uh, Charlene, if you think we can, uh, move forward by, um, walking in that last, uh, resolution with, uh, for, for Rue as, as it was taken off, you know, off the, uh, capital budget added to a, um, a, and I should have done this earlier in the meeting, but taken to a, uh, just an operational issue, operational budget expense. Expense.
You, are you referring to the pay as you go item on the budget?
That's right, pay as you go item.
Right, so, um, if the board adopts the capital budget, it's going to adopt the, it, that, when the board adopted the capital budget, it was both pieces of the capital budget, so it was approved.
Okay, excellent, that's what I wanted to hear, thank you very much. Uh, you could just tell that I'm so focused on water quality projects that, uh, didn't want to let that one go. Okay, that's all I got for tonight, happy holidays, everybody, um, Kat, thank you for, uh, your help tonight, uh, budget and finance team, thank you very much. Um, and I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.